Good evening, we're gonna open the, uh, when I get a motion, I'm gonna open the meeting for the Raleigh Planning Board for Wednesday, August 9th, 2017.
I make a motion and we open the meeting of Raleigh Planning Board.
Seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, so tonight we've got three continued public hearings on the meeting, on the agenda, and some administrative business. We're gonna go through the, uh, public hearings first. And the first one on the agenda, we have it scheduled for 7:30, is an Open Space Residential, uh, pardon me, NOSRD, Open Space Residential Development. It's a special permit application for 42 Newbury Road, map five, lot 40. John Sullivan is the applicant, and the property is the outline district. So, John, I know we've seen this a few times, and I think we're really kind of on the short strokes at this point, but some plans were submitted today, right? Or the last couple of days?
Today.
Okay. And I know that Mr. Graham, you just got them, uh, you got copy, right?
Just over an hour ago.
Okay.
He got the review done?
So you're all, so we're, you ready to go? No, Graham over here. Obviously, you're making progress, and I think we're, you know, we have to wait for Larry's input, but I'm assuming everything we talked about last time is really just, uh...
Yeah, I think with Rich and Matt here, there was a few, any questions, or, you know, we got the architect here with some of the pictures, you know, trying to button up a few other questions, other than Larry's review, that you guys may wanna see, or may not see?
Well, uh, I mean, I think we more or less have to wait for Larry to take a good look at it, but I know I took an initial look at it. Looks like you've connected the walking trail from Newbury Road all the way out to the trails that exist in the back now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, uh, so I think that was a good improvement, at least it just provides public access to what, you know, was obviously the, the set aside for some open space, and gives them access to the rest of the trails.
Yep.
I think that goes a long way towards the whole objective of the OSRD.
Yep.
And architectural review, we'd love to look at it, but, uh, that's not our jurisdiction, so, uh...
Yes.
But we have an architect here who could like to...
No, because it's an OSRD, it's an OSRD, you're trying to live up to standing and improve the town.
That's true.
So, might as well put it up.
Please, yeah, once, I mean, you've got the time.
And we, we have at least one neighbor here.
Yeah, I think what we should do is go over what we have.
Please do.
Um, why don't, uh, I think maybe Rich?
Yeah, I can, I can take you through the, um, our updated design. We, at the last hearing, talked about, um, talked about the drainage and what we needed to do to, um, to accommodate that. Yeah. Uh, so we had, and, I'm sorry.
No, that, I don't need to see that.
Okay. Um, we had some, some, um, concept drainage areas set out in the prior design. We've got, um, we've got them designed in detail, okay? We have two infiltration ponds, one at the entrance, uh, to the left of the proposed driveway. This is actually in the location of the existing driveway, um, and this guy here, which is further down the road, that takes drainage from this area, this takes the drainage from this area. And we've incorporated all the, uh, the updated driveway widths. We've got a 20-foot wide driveway width, which is the minimum we can have here.
I think that was down from where you initially, you were 24 on the initial plan?
Um, we were a little wider here, yes, for sure.
Okay, yeah, I think there was a comment.
Where we didn't narrow it was up at the turnaround, because we need to have enough width to be able to turn around an emergency vehicle. Uh, but in those areas, we still have the same pavement width, but we've got, um, some paver, um, edging that will, um, look better, and it won't be, look like a seafather. We did some additional testing that allowed us to have a separate septic system for each of these units, which we had talked about. Uh, we did additional testing back here. So, um, that worked out well, as well, and, um...
So each unit will have its own distinct septic, there's no shared systems at all?
That's right. Each unit has its own septic tank and its own leak and field.
And, so you got the front house, two units in this L-shaped house, and then you got two units in the barn, right?
Two units in the barn, there's an existing septic system for this half of the barn, or this part of the barn, and then the, the right side will have a septic system in this location. We've also, we filed with CONCOM, and we filed with Natural Heritage, which is part of the conservation filing. We filed the stormwater permit with CONCOM as well, and, um, we would like to, like, wrap up the whole review of the stormwater through Larry with the Conservation Commission, which they agreed to use his stormwater review for their stormwater review. We filed that, that paperwork, um, a week and a half or two weeks ago with them. Um, and I think that's, that's where we're at.
Good. Every time it gets a little bit better, and it's looking good.
Yeah, I think we're pretty close.
Yeah. Good.
What I, what I'd like to, to ask is that if Larry, um, in his review of this, this data can, if we can, uh, communicate and hopefully deal with any outstanding issues prior to the next hearing, that we could do that.
I think we'd certainly like to see that happen, as long as, you know, his review is consistent with what you're proposing, and I think, you know, we'd like to, it'll be long, too.
Okay.
All right. And, Mrs. Pearson, anything you'd like to ask?
No, I'm just, like I've said before, the drainage.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. Can I just ask you, the retention pond that you put by the front of, by Newbury Road, I mean, I know you're, can't account for the engineering of the roadway, but will that alleviate any of the pooling that...
It's, it's only gonna deal with what is on our property.
Sure.
There's, there's a hump there between Newbury Road and this part of the property.
Okay.
Um, we will be able to fix, um, some puddling that's occurring on our frontage, but there's, there's a hump here.
Gotcha.
That is stopping this runoff from getting, getting to, down at, uh, 26, I think it is. Um, there's a, a natural location for that, where that runoff went, and there's a hump there, and that needs to be taken down, and my understanding is that the town has got that, that portion of roadway on a list to repave.
It's to be reclaimed. It's a section of the road that is not, it's gonna be, the town did a survey of every road in town, and certain areas are either gonna be, are okay, they're gonna be repaved or reclaimed, but from the beginning of Foxford Road up to the crest of the hill, just beyond the property line, I believe that's one that should be, that I think I heard right, is gonna be reclaimed, and they're working on it. So, that's why I says, if you guys could work together, check with the highway department, if it's gonna be done next spring, you know, then you can all work the same way together and not have to have your road that's already been done, or the new driveway cut off with the drainage, so it's kind of, try to work together. Even though I know you have no jurisdiction over what the highway department does on a road, but I think you get developers in like this, and they should check with the highway department and see what's the position, since the town has spent the thousands of dollars to look at every road in town.
Have you, John, and...
I'll just, depending on whether the town, or does, or does not reclaim the road in the next year or so...
You know what, I apologize, what do you, what's the difference between reclaiming and reserving?
Reclaiming, they grind it up completely.
Okay, and they could regrade it if they had it to.
Yeah.
So, meanwhile, if they do or do not, I will take it upon myself to help alleviate the puddle situation in front of the new driveway, to help at least that situation for now. That way, if it doesn't actually happen, at least it'll be fixed for now. You know, I have absolutely no problem with that.
And just to explain, that there is an upgrade between here and here to, to flatten that out, 'cause there is, there is a dip there. Uh, there's an upgrade to get that water, um, in the water pipe, but there's, there's, you know, there's other issues, there's other issues down the road that we can't, we can't deal with.
Yeah, I mean, while you're out there, check with the highway department, see if you can coordinate what you're doing, but I, obviously, their schedule could mean that they're not working on it for two years.
Because I gotta chop across the street anyway for a lot of meat, so I have no problem. We'll actually have to talk.
Good, well, uh, I'll try to keep you on track.
I throw a few questions.
Oh, please, certainly, Larry, I didn't mean to.
Let's outplay Rich on the spot. I'll throw a few questions out there, Rich. On the two infiltration ponds, what kind of infiltration rates do you have out there? Is it sandy soils like it is in the back?
Yeah, yes.
What, what kind of pretreatment are you, do you have before the infiltration?
We have catch basin and four bays.
Okay.
Actually, this, this one here does not have a catch basin, it just has the four bay.
And if, uh, when we start reviewing this, if we can, uh, justify, um, bringing some of that road water off, what, what kind of drainage are we talking about on Newbury Road that's, that's in, that's trapping that puddle, what kind of drainage?
What is the watershed to that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is it just the roadway, or is it coming off the other side? I forget what's...
You know, that's a good question. I, I don't know if it's taking, taking drainage from the other side of the street.
No, the other side is pretty flat.
Yeah.
So, so if we, I think we could accommodate it, could we cut through the hump that you're talking about, uh, and bleed some of that water off, even if it's a slow bleed into this...
No, but that hump is off, it's down here. That's the issue.
Okay, but is there a way to get the road water off just to the north of your curb cut, and, and bleed it off into that upper system? Would there be a way to do that?
I don't think that we can do it without increasing the rate of runoff to this, to that property.
Okay.
And, and I don't, I don't think I can...
Run off to the north, probably to the north?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Kick, kick real more water off of the neighbor. That's all, I, I, before we started looking at it, a couple of questions. Oh, and, uh, when, when is your next CONCOM meeting that we might be...
22nd.
22nd of August?
I'm not expecting then, do you want? It's probably, it's probably two meetings.
Maybe every couple of weeks?
Yes, thank you, actually.
Just so we have a target to shoot for, getting our stuff to...
Planning Board is also probably... So, so much of what we're doing in the next meeting is gonna depend on Larry's review, it sounds like, you know, we're gonna have to work with him with everything, through everything. So, our next meeting is the first Wednesday in September, September, what's the date on that?
13th.
13th?
Wednesday, so... Second.
It's the second Wednesday, so it's...
It's the sixth.
How do you 13th? So I think that's when we'll see again. We'll shoot to have our stuff done in a couple of weeks, so we can get to Rich to, you know, outstanding issues, so about the 13th, hopefully, we can have our guys together. Okay, then we'll also have some input from CONCOM at that point, so that, uh, we'll be able to work together.
Is, is there, are we writing up the draft for the COB note of, if you wanna talk about any conditions you'd like to see, or you wanna like to make, make it more appropriate to wait till after the technical review?
I'm, I'm not into it enough to offer anything. We can just hold off on that.
Okay.
Let's get Larry to recommend. Anyone else have any questions, or anything you wanna, you wanna go over the...
Architect, too.
The updated architect. Yeah, once you, I think we should...
Just getting up, just getting up, just getting up.
You ready to roll?
Yeah. My sports jacket, buddy, man. Well.
I got mine, too.
So, John and his family's gonna live in the existing giant garage, we turned it into a barn, so it's a little bit different than working, uh, with a developer that's doing a development. We, uh, the actual person, it's a family property, they're gonna live in the building. So, the design's personal to the, his family, so while we're affecting the aesthetics of the outside, we're actually thinking about how they're living in the inside, the bathrooms goes, and bathrooms, and kitchen. So, uh, the only thing that really differs from the front facade from the last time we might, last time we met, might be some proportions and locations and windows, uh, details of that, that they might go three, six inches around, and so forth, or a chimney location, but the concept of the front facade's still the same. The proportions are just getting nicer as we move along. In other words, it's not generic, it's somebody's actual house, it's sitting in a room. The back of the house, uh, has a lot more harmony to it, now that we know more clearly what's going on in the interior, and how, and how that gets laid out. There's window patterns that make sense with each other, there's existing skylight locations that we're able to measure that we plan on having on the back, and they fit into the footprint of the, the structure itself. And the same thing with the side elevations, there's window patterns that affect, or have to do with the interior layout, looking out of spaces or kitchen windows, or bedroom windows that we degress, and so forth. So, for instance, this is a massed bedroom in this corner, uh, this one is necessarily meadegress, so we need degress windows on the other side, and try and create some, again, some harmony out of it. This building really hasn't changed much. Um, there's been a few little tweaks that you, you wouldn't necessarily notice. The mudroom's stretched out two feet. We're looking into what kind of doors we could use, and, uh, something that looks classy, and materials for these art doors, and so forth, right now. And then, of course, we're working out with Rich the grades. So, at the moment, um, I know you can see, but there's a lot of gray here in this foundation, we haven't adjusted yet. Of course, we take the siding and push it closer to gray, it's, you know, two feet of foundation showing, so those are things we're just, we're working on at the moment. A little real major change we've made, so we'll show you these next time, we'll have those things for you, uh, is, and this is a different scale, it's quarter inch scale, is, uh, utility building. Uh, it's in more harmony with the other two buildings now. So we did a salt block shape, um, which is more contextual to some historic architecture, as opposed to simple shed roof. At the same time, it has that same contemporary flavor with the windows and the harmony of them, and, um, and the materials for the roofing, and so forth.
How does, how are they, the solar panels?
I'm thinking these might be some solar panels that create energy for the maintenance building. Or, uh, again, we're gonna look into some of those green things with the, the buildings, and try to get the buildings, hers, rated, and so forth.
The difficult thing is, what's the width of the overhead door, or, it's a door there?
I think it's eight feet.
No, the other way.
The length.
The, the width of it?
Yeah.
About 16. We've gotta, we gotta tweak it this way, we don't really like the width of the building, I don't really like the quantity of the siding.
Yeah.
Side, yeah, David. Uh, how do I feel about two doors being next to each other? Should be a little roof, maybe that door should tuck to the side instead. Um, little things like that. This, this looks really nice, but then I wonder whether there should be another window here. Um, what happens is, Joe sort of, Joe sort of picks away, and I walk past his desk with the coffee.
Yeah.
And I say, okay. But I think we're at a point where prior to next meeting, Joe and I are gonna sit down with the drawings and lay them all out, say, okay, let's be really picky about every single thing. Again, this is a great example, you know, if it's not enough siding on this side, should we have two doors? Why is there three lights that are exactly the same light depth, and it doesn't, doesn't really work so well? This, you know, they, they should be pulled in, right, David? Or maybe there should be two?
Those aren't too bad, I have a problem with the 16-foot door, but there may be a door out there that looks like two eights glued together.
Maybe.
In an overhead.
You mean like a carriage door look?
Well, it's always a problem, when the door is open on a 16-foot, it looks like a person who has no taste.
Can that building be seen from the street?
Yeah, you can't, it's the only size one.
Yeah, this is, this is the front side, first front side, you see, yeah. Yeah, so we want it to be attractive.
Other than that, it looks, looks pretty good. What's the siding?
Uh, it's battening board. Yep.
Maybe on a scale there.
These are, yep, yep, 'cause I've got my baton, so I'm a bit far apart.
It's a good-sized board.
Yep.
It's nice on the salt blocks, right?
Yeah, it is. I mean, the nice thing about a farm collection is that you have the flexibility, because things were always built at a different time.
Yes.
And for a different purpose, you know. The big barn is different than a girl barn.
All right.
Nice and present.
Please, Mr. Graham has one more question.
Yeah, maybe between Rich and Matt, uh, pretty good-sized buildings, how, how are the, or how is the roof drainage being handled? Are there gutters, downspouts, drains through the infiltration? Where's the water going off the roof?
Yes.
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 Gutters and downspouts?
Yep.
Downspouts are going to...
Right now, the existing building, the existing shop building, has dry well, where all the downed leaders go now, and so, just so...
Are they, are they gonna overflow, or go through the infiltration basins, or the individually?
We have them going to the ground right now.
Okay.
Um, in our model.
And what about the foundation drains? Is it, you got daylight to, for foundation drains?
We have, we have daylight on the big building. Um, the, the smaller building, we don't.
So it's...
It's above groundwater, but, um...
And it has cellars, or will have cellar?
Yeah.
The big building's a slab on grade, 'cause it's a garage now, so...
Okay, anybody else have, have any comments, or any questions? John?
And then I did forward, we forwarded the landscape renderings and everything, so you can see, like, uh, everything is extremely well-planted, and matches the current house out front, and current, carry the whole feel throughout the whole project, and it's quite a plant list, to say the least.
Yeah, the landscaping, which was, I don't need to see them now.
Yep, so you guys have all, all the renderings of each building from all four sides?
Perfect.
Kind of get an idea of where we're going, and it's, uh, quite, it's over 400 plants for the property, so...
Well, it's, you designed it to live there, though?
Yes, yep, so, not skin.
Your neighbors would be happy with that.
Yeah.
All right, well, uh, if that's it, I'm gonna move on to the next item on the agenda tonight. All right, so thanks for coming, and we'll look forward to seeing you next week, or next time, next meeting.
7:30, 7:30.
Seven, yeah, we're gonna put you on for 7:30, okay, John?
Okay.
Next meeting, all right?
All right.
Okay, so, uh, next item we have, uh, it's a little late to get started, but it's a site plan review for the proposed building for hydrant regency dog cal, uh, operation at 104 Newbury Turnpike, map 14, lot 14-2. Uh, Mark Bernhardt is our applicant, and the property is located in the retail zoning district, so, uh...
10-year.
Right, I understand, we just got the, uh, the plans like in the last day or so, right?
About a week.
Okay, we, still, we haven't had an opportunity to do a full, uh, review on this at this point. Uh, the plan's just gotten a little later than I think you anticipated, because we haven't had a chance to, or Mr. Graham hasn't had a chance to take a look at it. Anything, uh, so as a result, I think we have no choice but to continue, unless there's something you can add tonight's meeting.
Well, I was wondering if it's possible, um, I can't, the only thing that I would like to add to this is just kind of carve out a little area where that temp fence is running from the main play yard to the building. Um, how it sits right now with the open space there, just do like a temp fence, so that way, at least...
So, I'm, I'm gonna make a suggestion that you, um, he and I will sketch that up, and I'll, I'll get a revised plan to, to Larry, your...
Okay, that, that'll be a permanent thing, then?
Yes, I just, I just wanna be able to...
That's a, that's a better way to do it.
Yep.
How can I, at least...
Okay, yeah, that's fine. You and I will talk about it, and we'll, we'll submit a revised plan.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't do this on a temporary basis, and we certainly don't do it without a, a...
Yeah, it's just fencing, so...
Does that, does that mean that he would just be wasting his time, or if he wanted...
No, he's not.
Move forward.
Yes.
Move forward.
We're just gonna change the fencing.
All right, so we'll put you on for the next meeting.
Make a motion and continue, your...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you now see on the, what'd we say, the 13th? And we'll put you on for 7:45, all right?
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You're right, you're right. Uh, oh, you know what? Oh, here's better. Okay, uh, so our third item, uh, we have a, a site plan review for proposed Briar Barn Inn located at 101 Main Street, the former Country Garden Inn motel, map 25, lot 92, in the central district. Uh, at this point, I think we have a, a request for continuance on this?
Uh, no, no, I think, um...
That's, that's a note that was in the wrong item.
I saw that on there, but then I saw our, um... It will be continued, uh, simply because I think that, um, we'll be able to, I mean, it'll have to be continued.
Our applicants are here.
They're here.
Yeah, they should be here, I...
Oh, oh, okay, I didn't see, uh, forgot we have a scanning room only in this place.
What time they are, the attempt?
So it's a, it's a no-show?
There we go.
Okay, so now I start then. How are you doing, John? So, uh, even around the hall, I called the, the matter, so, uh, you've submitted some revised plans?
Yes.
Okay.
We've done a lot since we were here the last time. Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here for the applicant, Jerry Vandetti, uh, relative to the property at 101 Main Street. With me tonight is John Morey, who's our project engineer. We have our traffic engineer, Tim Layton, here this evening as well. We also have Melissa Turnberg and, uh, Briar Corsite with us tonight as well, who are associated with the business and part of the project. So, uh, just to recap a little bit, since the last time we were here was May.
Wow.
But we've been very busy, as I said, since that time. We are seeking site plan approval for the redevelopment of the site at 101 Main Street. As the board is aware, it has been the Country Garden Inn and Spa for many, many years. It currently has 23 units and a single-family home with three bedrooms on the site, and we are proposing to redevelop this into a 30-room inn, uh, with a restaurant with 100 seats, and a small manager's suite will be located on the site as well. I won't re-present the entire thing, you've heard all of that at the May meeting. Um, this site does involve raising, uh, some of the existing buildings, the historic building that's out on the street's gate will remain, as it is. Uh, the single-family home that's located to the rear of the site will remain, but will be incorporated into the restaurant, it will no longer be a single-family home. But that structure itself will remain, and all of the other structures will be demolished, and we have gone through the Historic Commission, and we do have our demolition approval to proceed forward. Uh, since the May meeting, we did have a site view with members of this board, as well as your consultant, Larry Graham. We had two meetings with the Cemetery Commission, relative to our proposed... We had two meetings with the Cemetery Commission relative to our proposal to have a betterment on the cemetery property in the form of landscaping along this strip right here, rather than any other type of buffering. We thought it really made sense to have a good solid landscaping strip there. So we met with the Cemetery Commission twice, they conducted their own site view, and we do have a letter of approval from the Cemetery Commission indicating that they have agreed to allow us to do that planting and you should have that in the information that I submitted. We also completed our hearing with the Board of Selectmen and we did receive a special permit for the inn use on the site from, from the Selectmen. We have closed the hearing with the Conservation Commission. So the Conservation Commission is satisfied with, with the project, the hearing has been closed and the order of conditions will issue shortly. And we've been doing lots of site, site plan revisions in response to the town comments that we've received and we have comments now back from your consultant as well as the fire department. And John Morin has been dealing with those, the plan revisions, which you do have, you should have a, a set of revisions, both of the site plan as well as the landscaping plan. So we've been very busy and we think we have a good site plan before you now to bring the Briar Barn Inn and restaurant to Raleigh. The applicant is in this business, they do operate the Willowdale Estates Event Center in Topsfield and this is really being designed as a companion property to provide lodging for people who might be attending events at the Willowdale Estates in Topsfield. So they do have a good history, they know what they're doing, and that's always nice when a new business is coming into your town. So I think at this point, I'd like to turn it over to John Morin to go through some of the plan changes with you and then we have our traffic consulting team, Tim Leighton, here, who can discuss parking and traffic with you. Thank you.
Good evening, for the record, John Morin from the Morin Cameron Group. What I'm gonna do is I'll cover the main changes that were done on the site, there was a lot of minor things that we had changed too that Larry had requested. The biggest major change is we actually, one of Larry's original comments was the possibility of moving the inn building to try to increase aisle width, parking depths in this location. And originally, when the project first started, we met with the fire chief, he wanted full access around the entire building. We went back to the fire chief and he conceded and said that he'd be acceptable to just access down the beach side, he did not have to get his ladder all the way around the building. He still did want to maintain a ten-foot wide access way around the back, but by moving the building, we're now within the required setback. By moving the building, you just can't get the ladder around it, but he's fine with that. By doing that, it's given us the ability to modify the parking so that we don't have any parking space less than seventeen feet deep or any aisle width less than twenty-two. The actual drive access is still twenty as a minimum width. One of the other changes that we had made to the plan was we actually moved the main entrance to the, yeah, to the south, to give more buffer between us and the abutter to the north.
Wasn't there a utility pole that also had to be moved?
The utility pole always had to be moved, so moving the driveway didn't change that. The pole had to be moved in either case. Mr. Vandetti's already started contact with several utility companies to discuss the relocation of that pole. As Larry pointed out, it's not the easiest thing to do, it's not impossible, but we've already started with the discussions with that pole. As Nancy had pointed out, Conservation Commission, we're all set, we closed the public hearing with them. And one of Larry's comments that I'll just address was the potential of adding parking down in this location. And the one big issue with that is it's hard to see, the grades are ghosted, the existing grades, this topography drops off really quick. In order to get a parking area down here with the ability to turn around, we'd be within about ten feet of that wetland itself. And we already had extensive plantings from the conservation side to allow work within that buffer zone, there was a potential vernal pool down in that location as well. One of the criteria of the concom is we'll have to verify whether that is a real vernal pool as part of the order of conditions. One of the conditions will be that we have to certify if that is vernal pool itself. Minor drainage changes, we've added some additional yard drains to help drain the site. At this point, I'll turn it over to Tim and he can discuss the parking layout, the final parking layout and access.
John, how far did you end up moving the lodge from the...
It was about five feet.
Five feet south, so that gave you five feet more width in that.
And what we did too is we reduced the width of the landscape island and the width of the walkway, so it was a combination of a few things to give us more width in that location.
And so, I think the walkway had initially been six feet, now you're down to four?
Correct.
Larry comment on that, but is that, okay.
Thanks, so for the record, my name is Tim Leighton, I work with Freeman Peterson. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Massachusetts and I've been with GPI for fifteen or so years, going on sixteen, I'm our, I am our New England branch manager. Like John said, we've really worked together over the past several months to get as much parking as we possibly could on this site. We've got it to seventy-six spots with, like John said, our minimum depth, stall depth being seventeen feet and our minimum stall width now being eight and a half feet, which is an improvement over the sixteen and eight where we were previously. Seventy-six spots does not meet the town bylaws, however, we did a little bit of research to, to look into what's average for not only the area, but, but on a national basis. So we use the ITE Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual, similar to what you would use to estimate how many trips are coming in, it's the same for parking. What that told us was seventy-six vehicles is adequate, seventy-six parking spots is adequate for the proposed uses on the site during a weekday, it's inadequate during a Saturday, we would need eighty-two spots. However, if you think about shared uses between the restaurant as well as the inn, we feel that, you know, the shared uses would make up the six spots that would be lacking. Those numbers also assume one hundred percent occupancy of the inn, they assume one hundred percent occupancy of the restaurant as well. And if you look at the description of the land use code for hotel, it'll talk about most including restaurants as well, so we feel that the eighty-two is worst-case scenario, an extremely conservative number. So from that, from that standpoint, I don't know what else your folks would like to hear regarding traffic on this site, but perhaps to address any questions that you might have.
I, that's it for the presentation, I think it's a good opportunity to let Larry go over his technical reviews, because that's gonna raise most of the issues that we need to get to.
Yes.
Be happy to do that.
Is the board in receipt of my two letters, July thirty-first?
I am.
The second, the second letter is report number five, it's the, it's the easiest to open there first. It looked, and this is about the lighting, the most recent lighting plan, it looked like perhaps there were some dark areas along the walking path and back in the employee parking area, basically zero foot candles showing up in both of those places. Wanna address these one at a time, John?
Yeah, I think that's probably the best. With regards to those, we took another look at that and Larry's correct, we didn't have any lighting for this back parking lot. And what we propose is we propose a wall-mounted light in that location, we can just mount one on the building, we can provide the board with the detail for that.
Yeah, that's pointing away from the neighbor too.
Exactly.
Yeah, nothing in the back, pointing, pointing backwards towards the woods.
Right, correct.
Yeah, perfect.
And the other thing was Larry was talking about lighting along the footpath. We recommend to Jerry to propose no lighting and just not even have anybody use that at night, we really don't want to light that up. So we'd recommend, we're just gonna keep that, we do have lighting along this, but we would leave that dark at night.
What's the board feeling about that? Well, it's an encouraging little area on the site, I think, for people to be drawn to.
Especially, you know, I think if it's a wedding facility and people going for a wedding, there might be, you know, an inclination to take a walk down a dark path and get, that's...
Can you put like a little short lights on the side of the sidewalk, I don't know, a little tiny, tiny?
Yeah, we actually proposed those, that's, actually, I don't have it bonded, but the lighting along some of these walkways is exactly that, those ballad lights?
It's unsure.
They're about that high. I mean, we can most certainly light it.
And yet, just because you're trying to dissuade people from using the whole property in the, in the night hours? You know, I think that's probably reasonable planning, I mean, you're lighting all the areas where the public is being invited and you're expecting them to be using, you know, throughout the time on the property, but you don't necessarily want them going to the far corners of the property in the evening and that will bring them down that path.
And that's, that's the thought behind it, and I suppose if at some point we find during the course of operation that that becomes an area where people really want to use it and we can designate a certain area, then we would add lighting at that point to that area, but that's not something we want to encourage at this point.
But that's the intent, you think having a sign not to use after dark might be a as a public safety measure?
I mean, there's some areas I think signage just makes sense in this property, but that might just be too, too preachy.
And some, I'm just thinking, if you tell people not to use...
I wonder what's down there?
What's down there that I, yeah, I, I think we maybe would be, not, should not to sign it, if it becomes a problem, then we would...
What we have down there is just gardens and landscaped park area, more or less, right?
But it's really just like a bench.
Okay.
And the whole point is, is to gain access to the vernal pool and wetland that we're gonna spend a lot of money fixing.
Right.
So at night, there's really nothing to look at, you can't see anything.
Right.
And there's probably a lot of mosquitoes down there.
You can hear it, spring.
On the peepers, sure.
You know, with these, like, you have a crowd who's there for a wedding, like, a celebration, like, oh, you've got the overland, like, if you have a flashlight, you might take some, a case of...
So, I, I'm not particularly concerned about the lighting of the pathway to the property that they're, you're not really inviting the guests to...
You know, but the neighbors that live next door are pretty happy about no lighting in that walkway, inviting people to walk at night.
Right, but, I mean, down the road, you get it for your own liability concerns, if you find out everyone's going down there, you may have no choice, but I think that's a decision you'll make once you light it up in this property. So, I understood, that's just, I mean, I, unless anyone else has any serious concerns about that, I don't think that would be a...
The only landscaping thing I've heard is some neighbors in the area above the care of the property. The property hasn't been cared for, mowing the grass and making it look good.
So just maintenance between...
It gives incentive to go ahead with the pleasure.
No, it works the other way.
Not for me.
We can address that.
It's come up twice.
Okay, we'll take care of it.
Larry, do you have more?
I've got a lot, not on this one, not on that one, yeah. Any of the butters that have any concerns or questions about the lighting or landscaping? Are there any butters even present on this?
We've got a couple members of historic here.
Okay, great, do you have any concerns about any of those aspects? So...
There's a pond down back there, and we used to skate there.
Is it still flooded in the winter?
Who knows?
Yeah, I'm sure it does.
Yeah.
That's the vernal pool.
Oh, okay.
There was a, a brook that kind of went all the way through the woods and you could skate on that and come back to the pond again. The way down to it was all this, through this route.
Oh, okay. Which, it does rate, I know this is not an OSRD, but it is a public, you're inviting the public in, can people who aren't guests access the property if they were to... Report number four.
Report number four, we can skip the first one there, the second one, John has already touched on, the applicants are aware of that pole that has to be moved, it has a ton of wires on it, it's, it's gonna be quite an undertaking, just made that comment again as I did in one of the first reports. Number two is, and I don't think that a butter is here tonight to the left, but the trees that need to be cut and pruned, the response was from the applicant that they felt that the trees were on the abutter's property were going to be rendered healthier and stronger. I think some of the board members have made a site visit and have seen those trees. I'm not suggesting that that is not the case, that they won't be healthier and stronger, but I think the board has an obligation to that abutter to be sure that you're comfortable with that, and if that's not the case, in the end, what is, what is the remedy offered by this applicant with respect to replanting or screening or fencing? I know there's a test that's proposed in that area, but I think it's an item that the board should pay attention to.
That might be something with condition for it and review, like, just like you said, if there is a degradation of quality of the planning on the abutter's property, then it's something you'd be willing to address the remedy right now.
Oh, sure, we're showing landscaping on our plan and it has to remain healthy, we're aware of that. I did discuss this particular comment with our landscape architect who couldn't be here this evening, but he is confident, as he had responded, that the landscaping is going to be better once it's properly pruned. We'll be doing pruning and trimming on our, on our property, it will be, we won't be accessing the abutter's property to do that.
I don't know exactly what the board's condition might be in the certificate of vote and exactly how you award a remedy, so we need some advice from the board members.
So, so, so the applicant's proposing to prune trees on the abutter's property, this states in your report, you're stating that you're not proposing to prune any trees on the abutter's property?
We're pruning the limbs that hang over onto our property, which we are able to do.
Which is actually... Trees of law, you can trim them anyway in that's law.
That's absolutely correct.
Right, okay. But leaving a half tree is not gonna be a healthy tree.
Right.
Which is, which is exactly why I discussed it with our landscape architect, to make sure that that was his opinion, that we would not be leaving a half tree, we would not be, we can't prune to the point of killing the tree, so we will be pruning appropriately.
When that abutter was here at the last meeting, he seemed, I mean, he wasn't really episarial or, or meant, suggested the applicant that it wasn't okay with you guys doing that. In fact, I believe he implied that he was going to allow you to prune on his side, so that you don't end up with a half or a half or quarter of a tree. Is that the case?
He hasn't asked us to do that during the course of construction, he might, and, and we're all neighborly and I suspect we'll be able to work that out.
And I think that the condition we're, we'd have to consider though is something that says that, I'm sure you're using arborists to know what they're doing, at the same time if somebody prunes a tree too far, then that tree might not make it to the next season. And we, I think it's incumbent on us to make sure that we don't do anything detrimental to an abutter's property by authorizing you to do, well, not authorizing, but approving what you're gonna be doing. So I think if, if we do find out that twelve months, twenty-four months after the work's done, the tree doesn't survive, I, I wonder if the board would consider a condition that would require that you reestablish planting there that, that will replace that tree?
That we would provide appropriate replacement buffering. But I think it might be appropriate to say that we will have an arborist involved in pruning.
And I think that would certainly mitigate your risk that you'd have to replace the tree.
Right.
Okay, so that's something we should think about, but I think it sounds like something that's reasonable for everybody.
The second, the second page of that report under general, I just made a note that the applicant's response to snow storage was essentially that any stockpile snow would be hauled off the site because it would obviously impact the number of parking spaces which may already be at a free, or, or certainly less than what the bylaw requires. So I just make that note to the board that, and that too may be a condition that you might want to have. With respect to landscaping, time I, time I wrote this report, I... With respect to landscaping, time I, time I wrote this report, I hadn't seen the landscaping plans. I have no particular issue with them, with the exception of what we might talk about in a few minutes in regards to parking stall depths. Lighting, we've already talked about the two comments that I had on the lighting, and I think resolved those two. Drainage, we had, we were satisfied with the plans revisions with respect to drainage, and we got this report out early enough, I think, that enabled them to go to the concom, and I think that's why they were successful in getting that signed up prior to this meeting. Satisfied with the response to the water service, satisfied, no further comments with respect to sanitary sewer details or architectures. The big-ticket item for me has been and remains the access and parking and pedestrian access and ways. And if the board wants to, I'd like to go down through these one by one and explain to the board as what I see as the issue, and in some instances, how it can be easily resolved. You can skip A and go right to B. There was a disconnect between the actual number of parking spaces and the, and the little table that John had, it's more of an editorial thing. But those spaces may change as we go down through this and depending on their response to it. I still think that, in general, that the site is probably underparked. I think it's underparked for employees, and with seven employees for a 100-seat restaurant and a 30-room inn, I just don't think seven employees is going to work. And the response was that the employees would then occupy other spaces, not just the ones behind the existing building, but other spaces on the site. So, now, and I know your numbers take in to employees as well as clients and patrons, so, but it concerns me. I believe that at that point...
It seems like a restaurant serving 100 guests, it's got to need servers, bartenders, cooks, managers, hostesses, I mean, it seems like, and that's just for the restaurant. I think you need a dozen staffers there, and then you have the inn itself, which is going to require 24-hour staff at the desk, and probably during the daytime, another half dozen people.
Right. What we have on the, the parking calculations are numbers of employees on the largest shift. So, we have, I believe, eight on the largest shift for the restaurant and five on the largest shift for, for the inn. Will there be more employees? Sure. But on the largest shift, that's, that's what we have.
It seems like when you have the largest shift, you're also going to have the largest crowd. I mean, that just seems to correlate. You get, the only way this could work is if you had some overflow, which you don't provide for, other than potentially a valet off-site.
No, we have valets off-site as well.
No.
Well, there was two, there was two offerings at the last meeting, I think, in, in their response. One was, one was the onsite parking, which I think the board shares my opinion as well, that that just didn't seem to make any sense whatsoever, stacking them, pumping deep into the corner. I think that was probably a dangerous situation. The second was that you had a site, I believe it was 20 Central Street is the address, that you could take cars to valet park cars at. I don't know where that site is. I don't know, and I don't know if the board knows anything about it. How many spaces are there? Is that an acceptable place? Is the access okay? Is the drainage okay? Are the neighbors okay? Blah, blah, blah.
I think I'm going to have Tim address the valet, since you brought up the valet parking, because I think that's important when you're talking about a restaurant, that we have the ability to have valet parking. We did present what I'll call a max-out valet parking sketch at the last meeting. Tim, as the professional traffic engineer on, on this, has looked at it and come up with what he thinks to be a very reasonable, very working valet parking plan that he can present. We did look at the 20 Central Street. I think that probably is not the best option. I think we can accommodate, as, as Tim indicated earlier, maybe he wants to go back through the numbers and how he came to his parking calculation for the site. We've got enough parking, we believe, on the site, and then we do have the opportunity to add spaces to the valet.
Yeah, so, to Nancy's point, we've taken a look at the valet plan that was presented, and the original presentation is kind of shown here with, with the red spots. And I think to Larry's point, this was really just a representation developed of how many cars could we actually jam in there? Is it realistic? Absolutely not. And from a traffic engineering standpoint, I've said the same to Tim as well. What I believe is realistic is we could add up to 10 spots in these highlighted areas here, four behind the existing building, which I should also add, I previously said 76 parking spaces. That doesn't include the two existing garage spaces that would remain. So, there's those two plus an additional 10. There's these four behind the garage, the two along, along the east side of the building, and then on this drive aisle here, we would attempt to park four in parallel. That would probably also make these valet spaces as well. But that's probably, in my opinion, maxing the site out and keeping it still safely accessible.
How many is that?
That gives us 10 additional. Total of 88.
So, two in the garage, four across the, that straightaway there?
Four here, four here, two here.
And the garage, I do.
And the garage, I do. And again, looking back through the ITE numbers, looking at a hotel and a restaurant separately, we're coming up with 82, worst case, on Saturday. And if you read ITE, it tells you, that assumes 100% occupancy. The average occupancy rate of a hotel is 72. And I think it says 98% of the time, a hotel is 100%, is not 100% occupied. Pretty, pretty rare instance that you have a hotel that's 100% occupied. And then also for consideration, our feeling is, you're going to have many people that visit the restaurant who are staying at the hotel as well. So, there will be some shared park, parking there.
Yes, since I looked at Larry's report, and I just kind of kicked it around, you know, on one instance, I said, okay, why bring my five family, my...
Family of five.
Five, family of five, one car. I wish I said, okay, when we leave a meeting at the PTA, each of us bring our own car.
Right.
You know, so, you know, I, I saw that it's two, one car, one spot for every two seats in the dining room. And so, I, you can't really make any assumptions other than, I guess, I suppose the institute's done those studies and tried to distill those numbers, but...
They have, and the study is based on facilities that are open and in use and actual counts being done in parking lots. It's not based on projections. So, if you care to, I can walk through where those numbers come from.
I, I mean, he's the one that would most...
Well, there, 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 I, I could suggest it there. And, and on the, on the number of parking spaces, if 20 Central Street is out, this is, I think, reasonable, and we're up to 88. Then the lack of parking for this establishment is really going to affect the owners and their operation.
Right.
Because people are going to drive in, nope, it looks too crowded in there, we can't even find a parking space, we're out of here and going down to, you know, the Bradford Tavern or something. So, I, I don't think that, you know, I mean, I can, I can buy into the total number of spaces as far as recommending approval to the board for the total number of spaces, given what we've talked about. I did do for the board a little analysis or inventory, if you will, of parking width steps and, and aisle widths. I gave that to the board on the 19th, and within that, I did look at the Bradford Tavern. They have roughly 128-seat restaurant and five bedrooms over that back building. They have roughly 115 paintline parking spaces, so it doesn't work, the proportion's not quite right with the hotel, but I think, as Tim said, and brings up from the ITE with respect to occupancy of the, of the inn, that hopefully they'll be okay. But the bottom line is, they can't park on Main Street, and if there's nowhere else for them to go, I think they're going to lose the business. And maybe at that time, 20 Central Street becomes more of a priority for you to do something with or another site.
I, I think that's true, and, and the developer understands that, and it really is, it's a business decision because people won't stay if they can't, if they can't park.
I think some of your other comments, Larry, adding a four feet to the...
I'm not done yet.
Oh, keep going.
So, that was just on the numbers of parking spaces, and as I say, I'm, I mean, if the board's satisfied, I'm, I'm signing off on it for the reasons that I said.
I, I've been concerned about these issues because I, I think everyone sees this as a benefit to the town, but at the same time, we don't want to create a, you know, embarrassment for the town either, that...
No matter how many times you drove into a restaurant, it happens, and it's following you leave. I mean, it, it just, it's a part of life.
Right.
As long as it's not blocking on the Main Street, that can't happen, that's...
Let me just, I mean, he's got lots of suggestions that we ought to go over, and I'm not an engineer, so I can't, and I don't know why he did everything. Could you, those seven spots that are in the wayback that you anticipate will be employee parking, could you make them tandem spots so that they're deeper and let them park? I mean, is there any room to go another 15 feet?
Oh, the valet park, the...
15 feet to the east? So that you have, you know, they, they tandem park?
The parking fee drops off real quick.
You mentioned that, okay.
In the back, on that backside as well. And that's all in the 100-foot vernal pool buffer that's unaltered.
So, you really can't, you don't have another foot behind there, I would guess.
Right.
Well, I, I think, and that's, that's my next point, was that we've already talked a little bit about the seven employee parking spaces behind, and maybe that's another down the road issue that they're going to have to look at, that they're underparked. And that will be to go back to the concom and swing some more spaces in on the curb and push tandem spaces back perhaps. So, that maybe that's another alternative, but it's going to have to go back to the concom to do it.
It's a good point that Larry brings up. We've actually discussed that with the client and already started thinking, how do you mitigate that? Maybe it's gravel instead of pavement.
And exonerate the back employees.
But again, the client, I mean, the property owner knows well that this issue could be a business decision, losing business, but we feel that the spaces we have is going to work. But we are aware that we may have to go back, we may have to alter things. And as Larry pointed out, in that situation, it would be either a modification to the existing order, or if it's five years down the road, it's going to be the filing of a new notice of intent with the conservation commission for modifications on the back of the building.
20 Central doesn't sound like it's going to work. I, I just based on the, where they're located, I think it's too far almost, but I can't speak to what, you know, how valets want to operate, but it seems like it's at least a half a mile or more. Long time to...
I don't think it's quite that far. But we've looked at it, and given the fact that we're very confident in our numbers, it's probably not something, it certainly won't lay out unless we do a real change in that site. And right now, there's an older building on the property that the owner, who was the applicant, has done some renovations through the building inspector's office to renovate that building, and, you know, is it a possibility somewhere down the line? Maybe, but we don't think we need to go backward at this point.
And I, you know, just thinking off on my own, there's, there's a couple of car lots and gas stations that operate during business hours that might be willing to lease valet services after hours.
Am I, hey, you know, there are those, those options. I think one thing that really is perhaps comforting for this site is that you can't park on Main Street. So, there isn't going to be a situation where people are going to overflow out of the street.
Boy, you're right about that, yeah.
Can't happen. So, either they're going to leave and we're going to lose business, or we'll find an alternative that we have to come back and talk to you about. But we're really very confident that the numbers that we're using, that ITE uses, are conservative for this site, given that we think there's going to be a strong crossover between the two businesses.
Sure. And I suppose it's a good problem to have if you're finding that too successful.
Always a good problem.
Larry, why don't you keep moving through this?
Yes.
Kirk, could I, could you hand me that, where I think it'll be easier the next few comments that I have, if I have it over here?
Before I, well, after this particular comment, one of my earlier comments was, the way the layout is here, if a patron drives down here to park, or to park in any of these spaces, and I presume, I don't think it's on your plan, but you're going to have something like employee parking only, or some kind of designation that's going to say, don't go around behind here. I was concerned about the room that one would have to turn around here in the 22-foot aisle. It gets very tight in here. It means the loss of a parking space, which we've been talking about, that we're tight on and not losing. But if this parking space were eliminated on the inn, and this radius were tightened up a little bit, it could even be shortened up so it didn't interfere with the walk going into the building and the restaurant. It would, it would provide a place for someone to make that turnaround and go back out. So, my recommendation is to eliminate that space, to modify this curve a little bit, shorten the space up, and make it a turnaround area to get out of there.
It seems possible that someone's going to be just looking for the last spot in the lot, get down to the end and find that there's no spot there, so it's either back out or turn it around.
Yeah, and the way we looked at that is, we felt there was enough room. You can't, it's going to be more than a three-point turn to turn around, but you could do it in the space that's there without giving up that one space. Or you could back up about 110 feet, and you can back into that and then turn around.
It's a long way for some people.
Yeah. But again, if we find out that that becomes an issue, that's a change that we can make on the site afterwards. You know, I wouldn't give up the one space right off the bat, because to tell you the truth, somebody's going to park in that space anyway.
So, not if you made it shorter. If you were to cut that off here and align it with where you're proposing your walk, now it's too short for someone to park.
Unless you have a smart car.
Not even the...
They might just...
Well, one of those, yeah, yeah.
Can we, can we shift that whole string down, Larry, just enough? Take it down into that right there?
This way? Possibility, you're getting this space pretty tight to this turn.
Yeah, I think we've looked at that, and it just won't work. You can't get into that space if you try to shift it down any further.
It's the last space you would need to do.
You're right.
There's other things that I'm going to talk about that are going to impact parking numbers, so we'll maybe wait until we get to the end. The, the next few do impact, are, are do talk to widths and depths of stalls and widths of aisles. And on May 19th, I again sent to the planning board an inventory that I did on several sites in Raleigh and Ipswich. First site was the Ipswich Shopping Plaza in front of Conley's and Shaw's in Ipswich, right opposite the Quaggo Restaurant. The second one was the recently approved by this board, 414 Hable Street, the North Shore Positions Building. They're not too distant past the Raleigh Town Hall and the Raleigh Town Library. And in addition, the Harthouse in Ipswich, but that was more to do with seating, number of seats and available parking spaces. But in, in those four samples or examples that I gave the board, every stall width was nine feet, and every stall depth was 18 feet, and every aisle width was 24 feet. And I think that, and I don't know if the board looked at any of these, but as you drive in and out of any of those places in a standard-sized car or pickup, you've got minimum room on, on a two-way aisle. on, on a two-way aisle to make your turn in and out of those dimensions, nine foot wide and 18 feet long on a 24-foot wide aisle. So what we're looking at here, some improvements have been made, but we still have some, I think eight-and-a-half-foot wide aisle, wide stalls, we still have some 17-foot deep stalls and they're nose-to-nose. And we are dealing with 22-foot wide aisles throughout the parking. With that said, jumping to point F, which is this 11-space parking row that they are proposing right here. They've got a good 18-foot depth and I appreciate that because they have a sidewalk adjacent to that. So with bumper overhang or less bumper overhang needed, and I believe this walk scales out now to five or six feet.
Right.
So, so they, they have made that improvement. So with that additional walk width, even with a foot and a half or two-foot bumper overhang, you've still got the minimum three to four feet of passage. But what they don't have here, again, is that nine-foot width that I'd love to see. Simply take four feet this way and four feet this way and you can increase all of these spaces to three to nine feet. And that's, that's what I'm talking about in F. In G, it was just a comment, John just dropped the dimension of this 60-inch minimum, I think is the FDA standard. H is kinda the biggie. They did, as was said, move the building five feet toward this property land, which set up the 20 feet they originally had, they're down to the minimum side yard setback of 15 feet. So that gave them that five feet additional to work with here. I'm, I'm looking at the landscape plan this evening and, you know, I'm seeing a landscaping strip along here between the sidewalk and the building. I'm seeing grass between the curb and the sidewalk. To me, I'd rather sacrifice a little grass and have a safer, wider aisle and our deeper stalls. So that is my recommendation in H, that, and I talk about, the solution is one, making the building smaller. I think everybody says we're not losing any units and we're not making the building smaller. But simply eliminating this grass strip would give you four more feet to work with. And you can add a foot to each of the aisle widths, you can add a foot to the depths here, which are now proposed at nine feet in width, which is great. And this says 16, but I think you're at 17.
That's the old, that's the.
Yeah, so I think you're at 17. So these could become nine-by-18 spaces, these could be, become 23-foot aisles. Or, I, I know a two-foot grass strip doesn't work, but you've got some choices here without getting into the building, without severely messing with your layout, your design, to improve this centerfield parking. So that's what I'm talking about in H. The 26-foot parking space in H that I'm talking about, again, here, the depth has been increased. This shows 16, I think it's 17. The landscaping, as I look at it, indicates some, some shrubs and some trees. If they keep the shrubs and the trees back, the 17-foot depth here will be fine because we can tolerate the bumper overhang because we have no obstructions in front of it. However, the revised plan, I believe, again, for that 26-foot space is eight-and-a-half feet. Call across. So, again, numbers of parking spaces, sacrificing two spaces in that 26 would allow you, I believe, to stretch this out to nine-foot ways. And lastly, these tall spaces, depth is now?
17.
17, which is fine. You've got bumper overhang there, the depth is fine, but I think you're.
I think we're still eight-and-a-half with those.
Still at eight-and-a-half and, and I would like to see, obviously, if the whole thing is here, nine-foot depths, nine-foot widths. I think that's a summary of it. I'm still, I, I don't, I haven't quite swallowed the pushback on, on sacrificing a little bit of green here for safer and more convenient and less door-banging sides of cars parking.
I mean, that seems, I tend to agree with, with that as well, given that those aisle widths could be pretty limiting. Going to a restaurant, have a couple of drinks and you gotta kind of navigate a tough parking lot on the way out, I think, you know, we should have something that's more consistent with the, you know, with our, with our code, frankly, you know, wherever we're at. Is there any reason, aside from the aesthetics of having the additional grass strip in there? I mean, what other considerations are preventing you from looking at that, those longer, those deeper stalls and wider aisles?
Well, the aesthetics are very important for this particular site and for the ambiance that is trying to be created here. We've got the rendering that we presented to you initially. I think there are bylaws, not yours, but there are other bylaws, I think Ipswich is one of them, that it does have eight-and-a-half-foot spaces, spaces as their standard. Some I have seen as, as low as eight. I don't think a 22-foot aisle width on a parking lot is particularly unusual, Tim can, can speak to that, but I think Ipswich has a, has a lower stall depth and a lower stall width. And I know that was some of the sites that you looked at were in Ipswich. I mean, if we had a, a truly virgin site that we were trying to do a retail type of development on, or a development like the medical office building that was mentioned, where you have a lot of traffic and a lot of in and out, that's a different application than what we have here. We're trying to work with a site that has been an in for a long time and, and maintain that aesthetic as much as we possibly can. So that, we think we have a layout that works. I don't know if Tim has more to add to that.
Sure. So can I just say one thing, Tim, before you start? And that is, again, eliminating that grass strip is shown anyway as a grass strip, not a planting strip or a grass strip. And so I don't consider that, you know, a great green loss. My, secondly, you do have a drop-off area there for the restaurant. If that green strip is eliminated and the curb is adjacent to the walk, your grass strip is lengthened if you have a queue, you know, you got a real busy night or you're dropping off, you know, people for a wedding, you can use that whole walk as a drop-off.
I, I think that the nine-foot minimum width is a good, and I know the problems of going to eight-and-a-half, eight's even worse. So I believe that the nine-foot width is something that should be attained in most of the spaces there. I'm not so worried, worried about the depth as much because there are shorter cars now. Aisle width, where we can pick it up, I think you have to compromise the beauty. And I don't think you really are compromising the beauty of the site with the landscaping. You could pick it up to make it a safer site. I'm not so, I'm not as worried as some people are about the parking count because in many areas, restaurants are one curb per four patrons and this is much tighter on that end of the, of the four patrons and many places has worked out just fine.
Maybe we could allow wider parking width and allow less parking.
Well, that's what, that's what.
That's what happens, you know? And I think, given that we now picked up potentially 10 spots, we might have a little wiggle room about losing two spots. Just with the tenant, you pointed out to us tonight.
Sure.
The other thing that I think that might factor into a little bit, let's just say, you see someplace where you can get some of those nine-foot stalls, but there's other areas you just can't stretch, stretch it. I mean, could you put, mark some of the spots as the compact cars, just to try to encourage, you know, smaller cars to use that spot?
Compacts are typically, what, eight by 16?
I would know, but.
I think it's the standard for, for compact spaces, so.
Still can't get too narrow though on the compacts.
I always think, actually, thinking eight-and-a-half, you could keep the eight-and-a-half.
Eight-and-a-half could be those compact.
On the left side.
I think if you were to do something like that, you just stripe them at eight-and-a-half. I know our office building is that way. There's spaces that are tighter and there's spaces that are nine feet. And people kind of know, okay, this area's a little bit tighter. You don't necessarily sign it for compact because to Nancy's point, you know, compact is really an eight-by-16. It's meant to be, you know, a Prius, a Kia, a smart car or something like that.
Right.
So if, if I could address two points, I'd, I'd like to, as it, as it comes to both the value of the landscaping strip and take it with a grain of salt, I'm a traffic engineer, I'm not gonna pretend to be a landscape architect, but I'll, I'll get into it. The other point I would like to talk about is just the volume of traffic on the site. So as a traffic engineer, a small piece of our business is what I'm here doing tonight, working for private developers to talk about the traffic, the traffic impacts that their developments are gonna have. A large piece of our business is working for cities, towns and DMTs designing their roadway improvements, their traffic signal improvements and their bridges. One of the key words that has caught on in that industry is complete streets, right? And what that is, is it's designing roadways, and we're talking major roadways, not, you know, small driveways, but designing roadways for all road users, right? And along with that comes placemaking. And what you're seeing a lot of towns do is they're requiring these buffer strips because they feel like it brings a lot of character to their downtown areas, it provides safety for their pedestrians, it provides that actual buffer. It's not only a visual buffer, it's an actual buffer there. So I think if, if the landscape architect were here tonight, you would hear a lot of placemaking. I know the landscape architects that work in our office would talk about that. And, and to somebody like, an engineer like myself and Larry, we're gonna say, it's a grass strip, what are you talking about? Just, just lose it and widen out the aisle. But, you know, I think that there is something to be said for, you know, building that aesthetic in and having that, that place. To Nancy's point, you know, it kind of goes a long way to look at the rendering that's been presented here as well. You know, they're, they're looking to do more than what's currently on the site today with the rundown in the hotel. They're looking to really make this a destination. So, so more importantly, it also comes down to how many vehicles are we talking about on this site, right? So we prepared a traffic generation, a trip generation letter here as well, which I don't know if you folks have seen. But, but basically, it comes down to 59 trips during the maximum peak hour, car minute. You know, you're not talking about a Shaw's or a Market Basket where it's tons of vehicles on these aisles. Are the, are the aisle widths ideal? No, nobody's standing here saying that they are. However, I think that they're adequate, given the volume of traffic that we're representing. So, that's what we're projecting. I think it really comes down to what's the balance for the board, right? Do you folks buy into placemaking and the value of landscaping and that type of thing within your redevelopments, or is it more of a safety issue?
I believe in the placemaking and the landscape, but also what Larry is talking about, and I don't think they negate each other. I think that there's, with good imagination, a way to solve the problem for the best solution here. And I just don't think you're quite there yet. I mean, you've made a better count than you did, but I think you've got to play around with the landscaping and the widths that Larry's talking about to get a better compromise.
Sure.
We.
I just want to say to Tim's point that, and I agree with it to the extent of roadways and one thing I hate to see on a, even in a subdivision, even in a small subdivision, is a sidewalk immediately adjacent to the curb for the safety perspective. But in this case, you've already said, and I agree, and I think the board agrees, we're moving in here at 10, 15 miles an hour probably max.
Right.
We shouldn't have a safety concern of having that sidewalk adjacent to the curb.
Sure.
And it's great, we're not in a curb.
Think about it as, from, from my perspective as a roadway designer, think about it as not only safety of vehicles mounting the curb and heading onto the sidewalk, which could happen, but more realistically, it's somebody stepping off of the sidewalk and twisting an ankle. You know, so that's kind of independent of the speeds of vehicles heading in.
How about if we changed the circulation such that it's one-way?
So that was one of Larry's comments and I thought it was an excellent comment.
Yeah, I had that in my report, but I think you're gonna lose, just like going to your valets. Faces. Well, it will.
Yeah, I, I don't think you do. We've, we've looked at it.
So, so what John and I talked about is really not going with the 60-degree angle parking like you were talking about, but leaving this all as perpendicular parking, 90-degree parking, but implementing a one-way traffic flow in this area.
Put an aisle width of?
Uh, the aisle width would remain the same at 22 feet.
Okay.
John's thought is, and I agree with it, and John, if I fumble your words here, feel free to step in, what he said to me is, let's keep the aisles, let's, let's keep the parking stalls striped at 17 feet deep and not go to 18. Even if people do end up parking at 18, that's okay. And his reasoning was, one, it encourages people to not park out, but to park in. And secondly, I think it would look a little funky aesthetically to have 18 feet in this area that then drops down to 17 feet.
I agree with that.
That was one of my suggestions. One of the things that, that troubled me a little bit about that suggestion is, when you get back and you're gonna circulate counterclockwise, but then you're gonna head back. How is it all gonna be paint marked for someone coming out of the back to continue counterclockwise around the north side of that centerfield parking?
Sure, I think you'd have to.
Or, or can we stick an island out there, you know, with some signage or something?
Probably for plowings.
So we don't.
We might just like to do pavement parking. It's maybe better than, than putting an island in the middle there, but that way.
You do have that one island, I think you could, you could sign it at that.
Oh, there again, yes, sure, sure. So how does that sound? We pick, that eliminates the aisle width issue, it allows us to keep the grass strip. It still allows our valet to work exactly as proposed.
That certainly would be needed, provided everyone pays attention and follows the traffic flow. It seems like that's an obvious solution.
Tim, is that a good, is that a good aisle width for, at a nine-degree?
Uh, yes, sir.
I still.
One-way aisle, nine-degree.
I still like Larry's idea because it has a real practicality to it. The grass strip has gone to drop off, you know, it's larger. I don't think the drop off is big enough.
Thanks. Oh, I see what you're saying, drop off, you mean the drop off in front of the.
And the landscaping.
Drop off becomes the entire length of the walk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe you have a little bit more space where you need it, but I don't think it really affects the landscaping or the beauty of the place because the landscape guy's got an imagination that gets off of him.
Well, I, that's, I'm gonna leave it up to the engineers and the designers, but he also has grass closer to the building. Couldn't he move the sidewalk completely and perhaps keep the grass strip on both sides by doing it?
Well, that's part of the, could be part of the scheme, but I think, I think you still need a bigger drop off.
Oh, I, right, I just, so.
You get drop off for a car and a half or two cars there. Yes, and it's on an inside curb, so it gets, gets a little tricky.
And, and keep it two-way aisles instead of one. Keep it back to the original five, two-way.
Well, I think the drop off works, works fine with one-way flow, right?
Oh, sure.
It does, yeah.
Works better. Cause you, you know, you're dropping off on the right side.
Right. I don't have an opinion on the one-way or two-way. I think whatever way works better for them.
I mean, I think the one-way solves for a lot of us the aisle width. And, you know, pointing out a good point about the drop off area, people are gonna be arriving at the same time to check in, to get to the restaurant, to.
Sure.
So, you know, it could be, cause it serves, well, now we're not necessarily looking for to increase the aisle width, but it does provide a little more landing area.
Definitely, definitely.
So definitely in the center field.
That's true.
Right, and that's what I agree, right? So.
We probably have sufficient drop off area, given the type of facility that this is. Everybody doesn't arrive to check in at the inn at the same time, that's for sure. And typically, check in at the inn is not the time of the, when the restaurant's going to be busy, right? So, and of course, the restaurant, if it is busy, will be working on reservation-type of schedule, you know, it's.
I mean, I can honestly see more than one car showing up at the same time for dinner though, so.
Sure.
You know, so I think you're going to have situations where, then again, not everybody drops off, they get out of the car.
Do you know, if you actually increase the area of the drop off, if you're actually asking people to drop off, you have only twenty-two feet. Say, if you have two-way traffic, you're going to have people coming this way, but the drop off, each drop off represents an instruction, which forces somebody to go around, so that you've got, you know, somebody. I mean, that would be the problem with the two-way.
Right.
With one-way, you wouldn't really have that.
So the one-way solves that.
The one-way solves, and I don't think, to me, we're all over engineering. The solution is practical.
Yeah, I'm just saying, in terms of safety, I'm concerned about safety. You're forcing people to go around.
You could leave the grass strip because you're gaining, you know, you have a constable, you still have enough problems.
I mean, you still can drop off and step on the grass.
Let's.
Yeah.
If it becomes a problem, you can change the play to buy.
I think that's always an option.
I think some of these things that Larry has presented are very new.
Yeah, and I think the one-way really addresses.
Well, one-way addresses the aisle width.
Yeah.
I mean, are we dressing the aisle width so well that we can get the depth of those center parking spots an extra foot?
Well, yeah, they do.
Would they be?
Still at seventeen?
Well, I suppose they're going to be what they are.
They'll be seventeen, but we could drive them to hang out more. Because the aisle width doesn't have to be too.
We're not going to have any pinch with two cars trying to pass with cars all across the park.
So you pick up that length and address the aisle width issue.
I mean, and the only demarcation of how wide these aisles are are these two paintings that you put on either side of it. So I don't see why that necessarily.
You have some.
Expand that out by an extra foot either side, doesn't really change the.
You have an issue when people get out of their space and go in the right way. You've got to paint some arrows or something.
Which is why you have pavement markings, exactly.
And then they will drive to their pickup if they're picking up somebody.
I was thinking of that pickup to, so you'd have to go around, come back, you're one way to do the pickup, same as you do a drop off.
Yeah.
Sure.
In the end, it's better.
Yeah. I think it's better to have, take a little longer to get around, as long as it's safer navigating through the parking lot.
Sure.
So, can we summarize?
Yeah.
So that they have some direction as far as the resolution of the board?
Well, I think we all agree that the one-way traffic flow.
Which is great, if you don't mind, jump back up to F, I guess.
Take it back.
I guess the summary would be to provide or not provide the turnaround at the end of that ten space, way back in the back there. The house and the restaurant.
You know, one thing that, Tim, if you, if I'm not mistaken, you said that next to the existing house, you'd use this portion for valet parking potentially, right?
No.
Did you say you'd use this straight away?
No, no, the last area would be.
Okay.
He'd be by like the handicap.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question? I just thought you said four-door Chevy. Oh, I understand, yeah, pickup is just for length, I don't know the average length of a long vehicle is.
The design vehicle is typically six by seventeen, which is, which is, I think, a Chevy Tahoe.
That's good to know.
So is the van going to have enough room backing out of the handicap spaces with valet cars behind it?
These chipped up trucks are probably a huge one.
Here, I think that these may be valets, these may be.
Yeah, well, the van back and back and go to twenty with the valet cars behind it.
Yeah, twenty-two foot spaces.
Twenty-foot spaces.
They do have this area.
Yeah.
Going back to, so that was, going back to you, was to provide the turnaround here. Can I draw on this?
Yeah.
And if they modify this to some degree to make it look more like a turnaround, not a parking space, stop it at the, at their proposed concrete entry to this building and the restaurant. That would allow someone to have that space to turn around if they got back in the corner without driving back in here to see if there was a turnaround or making, as John said, a several points maneuvering going down. I don't know where we are on that.
I, you know, I think we're at the point where by picking up these extra ten spots, we could potentially lose a spot. And given that, John, did you say that if we took Larry's advice on this, you still think the car would have to operate a three-point turn to get around that?
No, what I was saying, the way we have it.
It's three-point turn.
It would have to be probably more than that.
Yeah.
But it's doable.
Well, it's, and you know what, it's.
It's doable.
It's property, but I mean, I don't necessarily think it's good for traffic flow if cars are doing K-turns in the middle of the, in front of the restaurant. I think, I mean, if you could see how that might work, I think we can teed that spot.
Next issue.
Next issue was this item F, I think, Larry, where you were asking for, could you widen out that?
That's, again, don't mind me marking.
Nope.
That's up in here, so, so a mere four feet on each end or more on one, less on the other, pulling this back would allow these spaces to go to nine feet.
And I mean, I think that's a worthwhile objective. The problem is we're still leaving most of the spaces at eight and a half.
No, these all would all go to nine.
Those all go to nine, the ones in the center would go to nine, everything along the.
Everything in these entire eleven would go to nine-foot widths.
Right, but we still have everything else on the lot.
Eight and a half.
Eight and a half. So we, you know, how do we try to direct the larger cars to the?
No, I don't think you need to, and I think we're.
Okay, we're in the center here, though.
So the eight and a halves remain back here, but that's another item whether or not, you know, we're going to go back.
I mean, just to give, I mean, right now, current design, the handicap spaces are eight by seventeen, eight by eighteen, that's two of them. We've got twenty-three, nine by seventeen, sixteen, eight and a half by eighteen, thirty-three, eight and a half by seventeen. All aisle width twenty-two. And as Nancy pointed out, I mean, like Ipswich, for example, there's zoning bylaw, eight and a half-foot wide space.
Doesn't make it right.
Nope, but, you know, we would just go.
Do we have a rule that states nine-foot?
Yeah, the law.
Does it not violate?
Well, we have the bill.
Why is there no sort of rule? Why are we at nine?
These are all.
Very big. I was going to say.
Those are the ones that are blocked. Because the end. Push the soap. Yeah. But you choose to make it long. So these are, if you want, these two ways.
So you can hold it up. It feels so, it's a perfect deal, but some of it probably strike.
Can you do something about your windows? I've been down there, you have windows, too many windows, the winding, the safety, it's going to smash when this guy pulls a Nina. You've got to get rid of some of the windows, can you cover those? Or something, you have some blue tar or something, put a blue tar for the windows in my house.
Yeah, that's a safety.
Too much glare.
It's clear. We can, on these faces, right along there, we can go to nine on those. What we'll do is extend.
Just go with four and a half.
Four and a half towards the street.
Gotcha, so you wouldn't take it on each side, you'd just take it off the eastern side.
Yeah, rather than, we really don't want to impact the walkway areas and all of that. So we can do that, so we can get to nine there.
Yep.
Okay?
I mean, the handicap spaces will stay eight, but that's allowed.
Right.
Because they have the shoulders, or the center aisle. So what would that put the count, I mean, here, there's eighteen there and eleven there, so now we're up to.
That doesn't change. That doesn't change.
I'm sorry, it doesn't change, I'm just trying, what's the count of nine-foot spaces, was what I was getting at. So now we're looking at twenty-six. I mean, I get, you know, there's not necessarily, there's longer vehicles, but not many wider vehicles, I don't think, on the other side. Well, that, I think, I mean, that's great that you're willing to make that adjustment. I think that, I'm concerned about Larry's point regarding the turnaround because I do think you could end up with cars coming all the way down here and finding that there's no place to park.
We'll do that.
You can do that.
That means we lose the space.
I, we, yeah, we encourage you to do that.
Okay.
Okay, but I know that that's all part of the business considerations.
Yep, let's do that.
So now we're just left with the final, whatever the final is, of the center field cars. And primarily the stall depths, which are now seventeen in either a one-way or a two-way scenario.
I mean, what if it's a two-way scenario, what if it's a one-way scenario, we're less worried about the overhang, right? Because we don't have cars going too wide, right? Is that, I mean, I don't know where you guys stand on it. If we've reduced it to one-way traffic, probably worried about the aisle width, pardon me, the stall depths, so the center.
No, I'm not worried about it because people, if you really don't like the stall depths and you have choices, you go to stall, you know? If you have to park there, you have to park there, but people don't care if the tail end sticks out, surely.
So, good, they made that adjustment. I mean, I feel like the one-way traffic addresses that issue, but I can only speak for myself.
No, it makes it better because in some conditions, you can go down even narrower on aisle waste on one-way traffic.
Sure. Do you guys like that?
We can live with what we've discussed.
I think in general, everybody's heard our comments, so go see what you can fix.
Well, I think we fixed it.
I'm sorry, I think there's two more things that I want to be sure of. Because John's got to redraw this plan and Tim, and if I'm in their seats, I'm saying, where were we on this? The seven space, I was recommending that you increase that to a nine-foot width.
Leave those at eight and a half.
And I believe you've got room to do that. You're at eight and a half, can you tell me?
You know, we start, we, that was hard. I think we've done really well with getting nine-foot wide spaces, twenty-six of them. That'll get really close on that end.
And then you've got, so combined them, you've got twenty-six spaces over here at eight and a half width. So we have thirty-three, approximately a third or a little more than a third of your spaces at eight and a half foot widths here. I forget where we are with some of these others. I think that's.
Those are nine that you just pointed.
Here, so.
Is it transformer or something?
So those are ten more, so we've got thirty-six at nine.
We just change it.
We've got thirty-six at nine.
Wait, I.
Larry, what's that funny-looking thing where you're going to expand?
Little nose right there. If you were to expand those stalls.
That's a transformer, I think.
Right.
Okay. Proposed transformer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Square it up. Because you'd need three and a half feet, and that's where it would have to come from. But.
That's dual.
Yeah, it just.
And that would allow you to increase all of those.
What does that do to the turning radius to get into that first spot?
Well, if it's one-way.
If it's one-way.
It won't work.
Getting out.
Getting out is easy.
Yeah.
That's a nice spot in the place.
And then lastly, and this may be a stretch, there's twenty-six spaces here. To widen them to nine means you lose two spaces now. You've already cut one. I guess you've already only cut one, but to cut two more to widen these.
So, I mean, that would increase your count to thirty-two, thirty-three on the nine-foot wide spaces?
No, we've got more than, we've got twenty-six, thirty-six, thirty-four, right? We've got thirty-four now at nine.
Those are all nine.
Those are all nine, too. All right, well, yeah. That counts somewhere around forty. So that would leave really the only, I mean, that, up against the budding cemetery would be the only place where we'd have the eight and a half foot. If we were able to get, well, that's a little parking, which is going to be a little.
It's more of a. Short of turnovers.
Right now.
Right.
Okay. So can we do this?
That's going to be a tough, what are you going to do it right?
We're talking about the seventh space, is it against the butter and trying to get it? Yeah, can we do it now with it being one-way?
Well, this isn't one-way though, right here is two-way.
No, I know that, but coming out here, does that help us to be able to?
No, I think the ones.
What's going to hurt us?
What's going to hurt you is that, yeah, having this one-way doesn't help it.
All right, so we're at thirty-four at nine.
So you're drawing off on the right.
Gotcha.
Yeah. I mean, you've got, you've got a whole. If they backed in, you'll only get that. This is part to. I know. I mean, if they just pull me, they're easily. Widths, they just got us. Don't bump it, don't bump it so far.
And what if we, we'd really like to keep the spaces along the lot lines at eight and a half. We're very concerned about that transformer issue there. What if we keep these at eight and a half? And if we find that it is a problem with the width, all it's going to take is repaint it, right? And we can lose the two spaces and get nine along the cemetery line.
I know this sounds inconsistent, but we're not, I think we all agree that asking too much to lose two spaces to get nine-foot lots along the cemetery.
Okay.
But we would like to see the seven spaces to the, to the west to pick up the nine-foot spaces in there.
Your worry is the transformer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like there's a dozen ballards around it, I think you'll be okay.
No, their issue is that they can't require them to off and rent access.
This is Riley, Dr. Black. Is this transformer not appropriately sized?
It hasn't been sized yet.
Yeah, but it seems rather large. It does.
What I think you're probably looking at there is a pad that it sits on, right, John?
Right. What does this?
And to John's point, for maintenance, this thing does get wrapped with ballards. It's going to be a smaller transformer on it, but the doors still need to be open.
Yeah, are they opening from the back?
Usually, are they open from all sides?
Yeah.
From what I've seen. For at least three of the four.
It's not as convenient, but they've got a nice corner over there.
And so I figured there was an engineering reason they didn't want to do that, but.
There is.
Further away.
Further away.
Yeah.
Quite tough. Let's just go down here on this.
Twenty?
Twenty.
So he's like six by six? So that'll be a primary. Right. They're usually on a four by four pad.
And how much would, if we were to, you'd have to expand that road three and a half feet.
Three and a half.
How much would we eat into that pad that presently?
I don't even think you'd hit it yet.
No, no, you wouldn't hit it at three and a half feet, seven times a half, yeah, three and a half feet is just, you know, about, about like so. Maybe John can get back with the electric light department and maybe scale that, or see if that transformer can actually be scaled down, which would make them feel a little more comfortable in, in expanding that to an S.
Well, obviously, we'll have to do that when we get a little further along with the construction types of drawings, is there anything else?
Is that enough?
On the list? Is it enough? I just wanna know, is that it? All right, if that, if that will be what the board is looking for, we will make it work. Yeah, we'll go through it one more time, no, let's do it.
I think we kind of worked hard to get through that issue, and I think if we can do those things, you've kind of answered every question we have from a site plan perspective. And, you know, because we do really wanna see a project like this come to town, I think we wanna encourage this to move forward, and I think it's great that you're willing to work with us, too. So as far as where we are today, though, I'm sure you'd love to wrap it up, but I think, I mean, it seems like we can't really go to a COV at this point.
I think that we're pretty clear on what the changes are that you're looking for. We'd like to get this wrapped up tonight, and we can certainly go through the conditions and then submit the final, the final plans, but that way we have our vote, we know what we have, and then we, we can proceed forward.
Well, first place, is there anybody in the audience that has any comments or questions they'd like to, see if we can address?
Gonna get on the agenda for historic.
So the first thing we need to do, if you're satisfied, leave all air our concerns, close the public meeting. Are you gonna vote and do that?
Second? I wanna do that before you see final advice, please.
We're looking to, we might like to close this again, this voting tonight, so that we can proceed forward.
We think.
Can you close it yet?
Well, I mean, I think what they're asking us to do, and I, I usually defer to Cliff on this, who's not here, he's our procedural, our parliamentarian. I think they're asking us to close it, take a vote, subject to the conditions we discussed today, and then work on the COV.
I think, is everything?
We get ready a final plan?
Yeah, there's gonna be a final plan, Larry will have to, you know, confirm that there are no other issues, but as long as.
As long as the plan conforms to the.
Yeah, but this is, this is actually just going, not, this is not, like, they're not, I mean, it's based on what's been said here at the meeting, there's no formal letter.
Right.
Or anything that they've put.
You would make the condition of your approval.
Changes are.
The next meeting, if you make the conditions, who's in?
No, you'd vote tonight.
We'd vote tonight, and then we'd, then we'd have a COV that might circulate before the next meeting.
Yeah.
Provided the plan comes in and. Satisfied. I mean, do you think procedurally, we're just procedurally, but I can't make a meeting.
I, I don't understand the rush to close the public hearing, if you're not going to make the final action on this until the next meeting, when.
I think we are taking a vote, we're gonna final action.
When the certificate of vote can be in front of you.
I have, I have a draft certificate of vote, which, you know, it, it, we won't have because we don't have the, we don't know what the date, the final date will be. That will have to be inserted, as well as the conditions, though, you know, so give me, you wanna go over what the conditions will be, we can go over them tonight, I'll insert them.
And yet I also have seen, we've had circumstances where Larry's looked at the COV and made comments on that, so.
Well, you worry about, you know, you wait all that time, you come back again, then all of a sudden, someone has, on this board, is a different idea, well, I changed my mind on that.
No, I don't think that's gonna happen, I think that corrections have to be made. I don't see what the rush to close it up. It's still gonna go back to, for one more meeting to look at the changes.
And I wanna help them, but I'm something back in my brain, but I'm, oh, yeah. I don't think what I'm asking is unusual, it may be unusual for what you typically do, perhaps, but to take a motion to approve the site plan, subject to the following changes, and then that's all part of the motion, and then we submit the final plans that have to conform to that, and they can go, we have certainly went to Larry for final review, but then the decision is made, and the vote is taken, and that's what, what's done.
And Nancy, how do you perceive the conditions that were talked about with respect, for instance, to the trees? That's not written.
That's right, that you would make, you would include it in the motion, there would be language.
Subjective conditions.
Exactly, we'd come up with language for that tonight.
But the conditions aren't even written yet, they haven't written the conditions, we rushed to write them tonight to actually, which we could do, but it's like nine-thirty.
I mean, there's two things that I, your point, we're gonna be back here anyhow to sign the vote, because we don't, we don't meet between now and the next meeting. So you're probably, I mean, I think we might just be, might just preserve, be preserving our jurisdiction over this matter a little further to make sure that the plan that gets back to Larry does conform, and we can work on the COV, you can look at a draft of it, so that the next time we come in here in a month, we are looking at, we're looking to sign a vote you've already seen that has the conditions, and we're not trying to create conditions without a final consulting review.
Through conservation?
Yes.
Not through historic? Historic, historic may create something that may be okay.
This is site plan approval, that, and historic, we have to go through, we understand that for the proposed addition of that has, the final design of that has to be done.
Our studio and the addition to the residence, actually, the, the whole site is controlled by historic, whether you know it or not.
But we're against that condition anyway, so you have to get.
We can't.
Ultimately, they can't, they can't get the, they won't be able to get the building proven.
Right, that's true, historic.
That's standing condition.
Then, do we know when the next, the meeting of the historic commission is?
Maybe.
September.
September.
Seven.
I mean.
I still see compromises on parking and traffic issues in this lot, which are gonna be going back and forth between John and Larry.
I think we resolved all of that tonight.
The one-way street, and then we're gonna do the length.
We've gone to great lengths tonight to compromise and to do things, and, and I don't wanna have, come back a month later and have this all reopened again. We've reached agreement, I believe, on, on everything that you've asked of us.
And I just think administratively, we're challenged by trying to come up with a list of conditions to put into a motion at this point, and at this hour, we kind of are gonna be challenged to do that. You know, I think we have the capacity to do it, and we've all got notes, but given that all you're gaining is a couple of days, because you gotta be in historic through September, until, you know, you're not gonna hear from historic until September eighth, and we're holding our next meeting on the thirteenth, so we're, you know, I'm envisioning a situation where you walk out of here on the thirteenth with a, with a certificate in hand. And that's gonna come five days after whatever historic might, you know, either approve or.
We won't dramatically change.
Like John, maybe you wanna go over a couple of things with Larry, you can get a written list right now.
Oh, yeah.
Make sure that everything's understood, that way.
I think I, I mean.
I think we did it. Read this file, ask for the summary, so you know what to do.
I mean, just go over it again. The eleven spaces, well, all of them might be handicapped.
Those are gonna.
Nine feet wide. We're gonna eliminate a space here for the back out. We're gonna make these nine feet wide. We're gonna make this one-way, but we're gonna leave these striped to seventeen, and leave those all striped to seventeen. So that's.
There really is not much, they're, they're significant, but there's not a great deal of change.
Is there any addition?
No, I think that's.
I wanna be sure of that, so. Maybe we'll close the public part of the meeting and look to the thirteenth for the, for the final, I still need that motion.
Second? Yeah, should close the public hearing.
So all in favor of closing the public hearing?
It's like we.